Thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama Heating and Cooling, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of Peoples Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council Meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
You're perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
I'm Rick Shambless with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, it's guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Cat Napper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith Furniture or call us at 662-862-7412.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Got a 2017 Honda Civic here we're working on. We replaced the flunk bumper, repaired the door, repaired the quarter panel, the curl of white, and we'll blend the doors and stuff on it and make it all look like new again. About a week's time on this one here. He's my first Santa car, got a prep for me to paint on that thing. Got it already worked, sanded, washed, and the paint will be ready to take up. Spray the doors, the bumper, and the quarter panel. Should have a spray Thursday night in the morning. Put that together.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
All right, now the recommendation to increase Josh's pay by $1 per hour for this promotion. Is there a recommendation promotion to do that?
Make a motion.
Is there a say?
Say.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, Mr. President? Right, number eight is a recommendation to approve hiring a scholar with him count as a seasonal temporary summer worker for the Hamilton Street Department. Will this be a recommendation for him? If this summer is coming from Kevin Walker, his group, is there a motion to approve hiring a scholar temporarily?
I'll make that motion. Say.
All set. All in favor? Now this includes his pay, recommendation to pay scholar with him count $12 per hour for this seasonal position.
Motion. Make a motion. Say.
Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Number 10 is a recommendation to approve a change order request for the Hamilton Southern House due to discovery of unforeseen damage to some of the working various locations throughout the house. Now, made with Andrew today and the contractor at the Hamilton Southern House and that one again Friday. And as they're working on the house, they discovered things that they didn't see before in the original estimate. And in order to complete it, it really needs to be done. So the total amount, I think, for all of this additional $34,136. So we need to, if y'all want to do that, we need to go ahead and get it approved so they can not hurt anything up. But this, hopefully, that won't be more binding than things that undiscovered, you know. As you know, as any time you build a house or remodeling a house, you might find things you didn't know about before. And that's kind of what this is. But hopefully, when this is done, we'll have a place that we'll be real proud of, a place that we can use and not spend all this money and not use it. The house has got to be used or it's just a waste of time and a waste of money. But we need to find out ways to use it and this will be something that money going to be spent that you probably will never see because it's stealthy, unseen under the house, four beams and things that are rotten that you haven't seen before and some of us in the root trust. Would you have a motion to approve this suspension?
I'll make that motion, say, as Scott Tyler. Say.
Any other discussion on this and thoughts? Okay, all in favor, Mr. President? Number 11 is a recommendation to approve the zoning change request made in public notice here that we just had. That would change parking located at the intersection of Highway 35 and Oak Pike Road from a R1 single family to a R2 multiple family. Is there a motion to approve this request?
Make a motion. I'll say. Make a motion, say.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, Mr. President? Number 12 is a recommendation to receive this purchase niche place for the heating and air system for the main lobby of the Hamilton City Hall here on the first floor. I'm sure Anthony can tell you this is what's needed, isn't it?
It is. Our air system is not where it needs to be. And I think the one downstairs is not working since we've been in this building.
Okay. A little bit of this out for me is Scott Tyler made a motion to do that. Say.
All set.
Okay, all in favor? Before we make a most to the jury, I want to thank our guests who are coming tonight. And Jordan, been on the job about a week now. Is he doing good?
Yes, sir. Always willing.
Always willing.
Yes, sir. Just it's more of a marathon, not a sprint.
Yeah.
So, you know, just I look forward to working with y'all.
Oh, we look forward to working with you too. I hear good things already just the first few days. That's good. Rodney, you got anything you're reporting to us still about? I'm Mr. Tracy. You got the floor, you need to give us any updates on Montgomery or anything. Another big coming up Thursday you're going to be aware of.
Going back Monday?
Yeah, come on up here.
Going back tomorrow to wrap up our final day of the session for 2023 will be over. I guess some of the biggest things that we've seen, this session is supposed to be, no, we went into a really bad recession in 2008, 2009. And so in 2010, when the Republican Party took over in Montgomery, there was a state debt of over $1 billion, $1 billion. Well, we paid off the last $40 billion of that. So now all the money we had to borrow from ourselves, you know, all the money that comes in off the Gulf Coast and things of that nature is now being completely repaid. So that debt is no longer outstanding. We also managed to put around $500 million into savings account. You know, we're already starting to sit that down and trickle a little bit in the economy. So just protect ourselves in case you have a rainy day, try to do like we do at our homes, put a money aside in case that rainy day shows up. Most of you are saying, I know this body of dollars may interest you, and that doesn't affect me. Clarify to anybody that doesn't know, it doesn't affect your county or city taxes. But come September 1st of this year, the state will be cutting its share of grocery sales tax by 1%. Then we're going to affect September 1st, as I said, in 2025. We're hoping to take a second penny off. And the only caveat of that is we can do that according to the law that was passed only if we see a minimal growth in the Education Trust Fund of 3.5%. And which typically does. And the reason we do that is because all sales taxes, you know, and income tax in our state goes directly to the ETF. So you're going to make sure that it can take that secondary hit on that second penny before we fully implement that. But when it's fully implemented, two cents, it's supposed to save the average household about $300 a year. It'll cost the state about over $300 million a year. So we made the largest tax cut in the state of Alabama's history. So we had several other tax cuts this time we won't get into. I'm a little disappointed that this next one is better than nothing, but there will be rebates going back out there by the file taxes last year, whether you did it electronically or mail in a check or verification fee or filed it no paper way. Every individual that participated in the tax process last year will get $150 back. If you're a family, a couple filing, is married, filing jointly, you'll get $300 back. That was the compromised version of house. We passed 300 and 600. But the Senate wasn't quite as gracious. And so you know how it works. You give a little bit here and get them to give it a little bit here on something else. And so those rebates are coming. The budgets both passed, I guess depending on your interpretations, it's good or bad. It's a record budget. The general fund budget is over $3 billion again with B. I tell my kids when I speak in the schools, it's a billion, it's a thousand million, if I had to put that into perspective. The Education Trust Fund was $8.8 billion. And the way we set the budget every year in 2010, again, when the Republicans took over, we were having, and I say this as a former school board member, we were having pro-ration about every two or three years, sometimes twice in three years. And for those who don't know what that is, you would get 2/3 of the way into the school year and the government declared pro-ration. And now all of a sudden, you've got to go make up 4% or 5% cuts in about 4% in about four months. That doesn't sound bad. Everybody thinks, well, I can cut 3% or 4% for my budget. Well, if you would do that at home and probably going into your new fiscal year, deciding to do that. That way, we would be telling the school board members, oh, you've got four months to make up 12 months worth of 4% cuts. So if you do that, that's 16%. And those last three or four months, you've got to make up. When you consider the average school system's budget is 84% of their budget is for salaries, which are under contract. You can't touch those. That means pretty much everything else gets shut down. So we haven't had, we haven't had pro-ration since 2010. And the way that's happened is every year, the Education Trust Fund Committee will take the previous 15 years' education budgets. They will cut the worst year out as not to skew the numbers, average the remaining 14, whatever that number is. There's your cap. You can't budget more than that in upcoming fiscal years. Most years that we're living in right now, additional monies come in. And so that's placed into a separate account or what you call a supplemental budget. The supplemental budget this year was around $2 billion. And you may love me, you may hate me, but just to be honest, I've lost before and balled and we've all lost to other things in life. I've never had the whoopin'. Like I took that night, I got beaten 103 to 1. I was a long no vote because out of that supplemental budget, the governor was requesting $100 million be set aside for prisons. And to me, that should come out of the general fund and not the Education Trust Fund. And so I'm sure I probably wasn't on the governor's Christmas card in this that night after that vote was cast. There was another bill that was passed that same day that would expand Alabama Accountability Act in 2014. And most of y'all remember that's when charter schools kind of got started. We would give away Education Trust Dollars that were public funds to go to charter schools or private schools or whatever. And it raised that right now to apply for a scholarship to go to a charter school. If your family can't afford to send you there or private school, your family income has to be no more than 150% of the current federal poverty rate. Well, this bill expanded that to 250% with an incremental step that kicked in a few years down the road. We kicked it to 350%. Over just expanding the amount of income your family can make is to qualify for a scholarship. That in itself perks the Education Trust Fund. What makes it doubly bad is the amount of scholarships was raised from $6,000 per child to $10,000 per child. So I was a no vote on that too. So voting no against the governor twice in one day, I don't recommend it. It's probably not really a good thing if you're trying to score points for the governor because you've got things that you want her to help you with and you know what project you're working on here. I don't think this is going to affect that. I think we're going to be fine. The council members know what I'm talking about on that project. But all in all, it's been a good session. New speaker Nathaniel Ledbetter of Rancho has run a very smooth ship. I know the previous four years, sometimes we'd get up there and Republicans, Democrats would have a disagreement. And we would always have a super majority where we could just rush things through. But in democracy, you try to let the other side have their say. Well, sometimes those filibusters might go on four or five hours. And I mean, they have time to run down to your office and grab a Coke out of the refrigerator or a pack of chips or whatever because you knew it was going to last several hours. What the new speaker is doing, we had a bill come up this time, it was last week as a matter of fact. We debated it for about an hour and 15 minutes. He saw we weren't getting where, so he asked the sponsor of the bill, who was Republican, to go to the speaker's conference room and spend whatever time was necessary with those members who've had questions and said they could come to terms and he could answer their questions. Well, they did that. We kept moving. We passed several of these bills while they were out for a couple hours. And they came back in and the then Republicans, the Democrats come to the podium, admitted their questions had been answered. We passed the bill in about five minutes. And so that new style of leadership, and that's not a negative reflex on the previous speaker. I couldn't think more highly of him, a good Christian man, retired law enforcement. But this seemed to work very effectively. So we've had a much smoother session in that regard. I know one time in my first term, one year, we met Tuesday through Friday, instead of Tuesday through Thursday. So over two weeks, that was six nights instead of four. And we were there the midnight, give or take, five of those six nights. And so it was nice that we all had one of those this time. We adjourned at 11:43 one night and the speaker asked us not to leave the chamber because we adjourned back in at 12:01 AM to pick up and go on and start another day because you've got so much to get going. So that's just a quick summary, I guess, of the biggest things, you know. Some of the political hot button things we passed a bill last year, maybe it was two years ago, that to K-12 sports, you had to participate based on the gender list on your birth certificate. Well, this year, we expanded that to go to colleges and universities as well. If you're a male, you're going to compete against males. You're not going to say, I'm a woman, then for two. You compete against women and you win a championship and you've got a strong physical advantage. And to me, it's less about the political hot button issue of transgenders and things like that. It's more about fairness to our female athletes. They should be competing against other female athletes. So it's not a political issue, it's a fairness issue. So you had some of those type issues come up that typically raise our head in the session, but nothing very, very controversial in that regard. So that was a good thing. So that's a quick wrap up. If anybody's got any questions, I'll try to answer them best I can. Or if you run away and ask questions when we finish, or if anybody here's got questions, I don't think anybody thinks I'm leaving anybody out. And that way folks that wouldn't listen will let the door open for them. So I'll have you guys discuss another project right after this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Go ahead, Jordan.
I do, I do have something to say. I'm really proud of the guys at the police department, the men and the women, from the secretaries down to the basic patrol and you guys, because they have really been tearing it up out there. The five days that I've been here, I mean, 2:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, sometimes they're making two arrests a day, three arrests a day. I mean, it's, you know, the amount of drugs that are in Hamilton is just unimaginable. But these guys are really working to fight crime and I'm really proud of them. And, you know, like I said, it don't stop at just the patrol level. On to the secretaries and secretaries. If the patrol officer works harder, that makes the secretary's job harder. You know, they've got to do their paperwork and case files and all this other kind of stuff. I'm really proud of them. They're doing a really good job. And, I mean, Hamilton PD wasn't they Hamilton PD without the guys who've got. And I'm super proud of them. I'll just move to that.
Appreciate that. Somewhere they posted down, I'm a drug, I'm a drug bust today with a bag of drugs that was found. And it's almost every day. And like you said, it's rampant. So I appreciate our guys and the job they do and thank you for having to lead them. Appreciate that a bunch.
That's a bill that my chief reminder, that's a bill I know he'll know about. The first bill we passed in regular session, once we got out of special session in March, was mandatory sentencing for Fentanyl. And the gentleman attorney out of Mobile, Max Simpson, that's represented with us. We let some attorneys have some of these hired on because they didn't want to know how to think at a higher level and carry some of these tougher bills. But he made a statement. He said he had a packet of sugar from a restaurant. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but he made a statement, he said he had a packet of sugar from a restaurant, correct me if I'm wrong, chief. He said he opened that thing up and it had been filled with fentanyl, and it would kill every member in that chamber twice over. That's how dangerous it is.
That's, well, it's dangerous.
Facing on the street.
It's dangerous. Man, we, we do, some of the officers in Marion County do have the, uh, the Narcan, and it's readily available, uh, in the event that we need it. Not only for other people that overdose, but for us as well.
Okay. Mr. Pratt, your daughter, she's going something y'all would like to tell us about?
No, we're just busy.
You sure?
Yep, thank you for asking.
Well, thanks for coming, appreciate it. Mr. Tracy, I know y'all come pretty regularly, we appreciate you coming.
We're just interested.
Appreciate it. Yes, thank you for being interested enough to come. Anything else, guys, anything? Scott Tyler ready for make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion, Jerry, if there's a second.
Second.
Ron Seck. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating and cooling, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers, and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, president and CEO of Peoples Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at six o'clock P.M.
Get your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
Uh, I'm Rick Chamberlain with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carried a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Since nineteen eighty-seven, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, G.E., Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in twelve months, same as cash, so stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith's Furniture, or call us at six six two eight six two seven four one two.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.